Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the August 11, 2020 work session to order and ask that the clerk call the roll, please.
Dr. Lee?
Here.
Mr. Chambers? Ms. Walden? Mr. Mullins?
Here.
Ms. Shinholster?
Here.
Mr. Reynolds?
Here.
The Chair declares a quorum present. I recognize the City Manager, Mr. Hank Griffiths, at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Shinholster. At the first meeting in July, you all passed a resolution giving the Mayor the authority to sign a contract with Simonton Engineering for some engineering services related to some stormwater issues in Carrington Woods. As I told you all a couple of meetings ago, actually about four meetings ago now, we were beginning to... Mr. Thomas had begun to identify stormwater hotspots that we needed to deal with as part of the new stormwater utility. And some of these were a little larger than others. And this particular issue in Carrington Woods has a number of parts and pieces. So we came to you all and asked you to allow us to contract with Simonton Engineering to do the engineering services related to that. So Mr. Paul Simonton with Simonton Engineering is on our Zoom meeting tonight, and he's going to do a presentation for us on what they have found in their initial information. And you'll be able to ask questions if you have any at that point in time. He has also sent me this information, so I have the presentation. And the Zoom presentation is being recorded, so if anyone would like to watch it later on to pick up on some things in his presentation, you'll be able to do that as well. So with that said, Paul, I will welcome you to our council meeting through Zoom, and we will let you go with it.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Hank. I appreciate that. Let me see if I can share this screen with you now. Hey, Frank, I think you have to give me the permission to present.
I thought I did, but I can do it again.
Well, host disabled to participant screen sharing.
Try it now, Paul.
Oh, there we go. Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Can you see my cover sheet now? Everybody see that?
We can.
Okay. All right. So good afternoon. As Hank told you, my name is Paul Simonton. I'm with Simonton Engineering. I would like to say we appreciate this opportunity to work with the city, and hopefully I can do a good job of presenting this information tonight. So we started out on this project, and the drainage basin we evaluated is shown in yellow there. And basically, it's bounded on the north by Timberlane, the west at the intersection of Robin and Tanglewood, and then south by Central... I'm sorry, Cardinal. And then on east by North Jefferson. This basin's about 50 acres. And by the way, as I'm going through this, I'll kind of try to keep an eye on the screen. If anybody's got any questions, flag at me or yell at me something, and I can answer those as we go through, or we can do it whichever you prefer. So as part of our first step, we conducted field investigation. We mapped the basin. We created this map of the basin, but I think the next slide actually will give you a better map and understanding of where we are. So this is an aerial view of Carrington Woods and the basin that we evaluated. And basically, orientation, this is Tanglewood Drive and Holly Hill right here. And then it goes down, and then Tanglewood switches to Brock Cliff, goes down Walden Avenue to Stone Meadow, and then it goes across to North Jefferson there. So that's the basin that we had. And then we started up at the top of the basin, and then there's some 20-inch pipes that go under Tanglewood. And then those pipes dump out into the corner there. And then there's another pipe under Holly Hill that picks up that water, plus heat water coming from Timberlane Court into there. Then it kind of meanders across Georgia Power and in the back of the lot here, and goes through a couple of 15-inch pipes, and then gets into a closed conduit, which starts out as a double 15-inch, 18-inch pipe here. And then it goes under the road into a 20-inch plate pipe. And then it goes with... dumps into a 36-inch metal pipe. And this yellow box, large rain in the yard of the house, is on the corner of Walnut and Brock Cliff. And you see the 36-inch pipe going in and a 15-inch coming out. So we kind of figured, soon as we saw that, that this would be a point where during the storm, when the water's coming down through, it's going to come back out this basin and probably flood this area pretty bad here. So we come out of that pipe, and there's 15-inch pipes going under the road, and then there's 18 coming down to about the intersection of Brock and Birchwood. Okay. And then we also noted that when you get to Birchwood, the pipe goes kind of across this lot over to Stone Meadow, and it looks like it goes under the garage of the house sitting on the corner of Walnut and Stone Meadow. It goes under the road, and then in the catch basin on the east side of Stone Meadow, there's a 30-inch concrete pipe there, but on the end of it, where it dumps out into the drainage ditch, is a 30-inch metal pipe. And somewhere in there, it changes, and that pipe is under the house that is at the intersection of Walnut and Stone Meadow. And then the... So then we go down in the ditch between the pipe and Jefferson. It's a rather large drainage channel. That and the 60-inch pipe there seem to be adequate for the job to be done. So at this point, basically, from the mapped information, we used our HydroCAD software to create a drainage model to simulate the performance of the system. So we input the rainfall data, and we did it for a 10-, 25-, and 100-year storm. Those are type-two storms. And as a reference for everybody, we used the 25-year storm as our design storm, and that would be similar to if you had back-to-back, very heavy summer thunderstorms together. That would simulate very close to a 25-year storm. People normally can relate to that. So the model then predicts the performance of the system. And the model that we just showed you basically failed to accommodate the 25-year storm and even failed to accommodate the 10-year storm. We had to go down to about a two- to five-year storm for the system to even be adequate. And even at that point, the house at the corner of Walnut and Brock Cliff still had water coming out the top. Now, the good part about this is, at this point, what we usually do is we will confirm our model by some historical data. And basically, in talking with Tim and looking out there, I think that what our model predicted was pretty accurate. So and what it did predict was, basically, the water that's picked up from Tanglewood in the catch basin comes out and then combines with the water down Timberlane. So this area, right at the corner of Tanglewood and Holly Hill, I think that's 1800 is the address, that area floods during the storm. And then as we're coming out, the meandering ditch that goes behind the house that fronts on Tanglewood or Brock Cliff, whatever the name of it is right there, that area floods pretty good. And then we go into the pipe, and obviously, the model did say that the water would come back out of this pipe and flood across the ground. And then the same thing as we go down, and then as we get to the corner of Walnut and Stone Meadow, this area also showed it flooding. And then one thing we did when we set... When we built the model, we set the elevations of the top of the structure as the flood elevation, and so that the model would give us an alarm every time we hit it to a flooding condition. And it was almost at every structure that that happened. So our next step at this point would be to start to develop alternatives to get a system in there that would handle the storms. And remember, what we're shooting for is that 25-year storm. So alternative number one was, we went through and we replaced all of the existing pipes. We did use the same route at this point, so that we weren't trying to reroute any through any yards or something. But we did not incorporate any retention ponds or anything like that into the facility. So we started at the top of the hill. In the 20-inch pipe under Tanglewood, right here, we changed that to a 24-inch, and we always use reinforced concrete pipe under the roadways. That's what we used in pretty much all our model on this one. And we changed it to a 24. The pipe under Tanglewood went from a 20-inch to a 36-inch. And in the meandering ditch that went along behind, I think this property belongs to the ponds. And we modeled that with a... It's an eight-foot-wide bottom drainage channel. And what we did is, as part of this model, we lined it with cotton, because with the amount of water going down through there, it may be very difficult to stabilize the bottom of that channel. We included that in there because it's pretty pricey. It has a cost of about $61,000 to do it. But if we can get the flow settled down by the changing of the pipe, that may or may not be required once you get into the design. But we included it in there. It helped a little bit to retain the flow there. So as we got down, then we replaced... Remember, there was a double line of 15s, double line of 18s, and double line of 20s, and then a 136. And we replaced all that with a double line of 36-inch pipe to get to the box, and it's the double line of 36 coming back out. Now, to get under Walden Avenue, what we did was, we changed to a smaller pipe but more lines, because we feel like that with all of the utilities in the way there, we probably will not be able to continue our double line of large pipes. And then once we get to Walnut, between where the crossing is there down to Birchwood is a 30... Double 36. And when I say double, we're talking basically two lines of that size pipe. And then from Birchwood on down to Stone Meadow is a double line of 42s. Once we get under there, then we reroute outside of the building, the house there, and then we have double 48s going out to where it dumps into the ditch. Now, that's if we don't use any retention other than a little bit of minor retention up here at the channel, and then we're just increasing the size of all the pipe. So our next alternative, number two, is we're going to replace the pipe, but we're also going to include about a 3/4-acre retention pond up here on the... In the southeast corner of Tanglewood and Holly Hill. And so we would continue... We would still replace the pipes under Tanglewood and Holly Hill with the 24, 36. We would put that 3/4-acre pond in there, and then we would grass the channel going down through here. We did not include a concrete channel in that. And then once we get here, then remember, in the last model, it had this double line of 36-inch pipes, and so we've managed to lower that to 30-inch pipes. And then comes out, and then instead of having four 30-inch pipes going under Walnut, we had just three lines of that. We get over to Walnut, run parallel, then you'll notice now our pipe sizes start to get back up to the same level as it was without the retention. So there's not a lot of difference in the pipe sizes here. We do on the... After we get past Stone Meadow, we do end up going back down to 42s instead of the 48 there. So there's a little difference in the size of the pipes, not a huge difference, though. But we do end up having to acquire property and put a pond in, and then manage and maintain that pond under this alternative. So you remember, basically, as I was going through the alternative, I said we were keeping the same alignment. We did not try to do any pipe rerouting. But if we were to go with either of these alternatives, then I think the prudent thing to do would be, we would go up to Tanglewood, and we'd slide those catch basins down the hill some, put them on the corner, and get that captured pipe water in pipes till we get on the south side of Holly Hill. And then we would take the pipe under Holly Hill and combine those together to get in the drainage channel. And then as we go down and come back out on Brock Cliff, instead of going across the yard here, we would take this pipe and run it down the intersection to Brock Cliff and Walnut, then run along Walnut. Then we would leave the pipe in the yard drain in there, because it is kind of a low area there that needs to be drained, so we would leave that in. And then, basically, when we get down here, we would take and reroute this pipe, so it's not under the house here. And then also, it moves so that it's not under the house over at this point. So that these would be some suggestions, and what we'd have to do is work out the elevations, make sure we didn't have any utility conflicts, and then that in the design stage of the process. But these would be some of the design considerations that we would want to explore as part of the project. So we get to there, and then... So then we go back, and we say, okay, which property owners would be... Would have direct impact from the construction? And we have the Tillmans on the corner of Tanglewood and Holly Hill that, you know, in order to reroute the pipe and do it, we would have to actually get out, probably, on their property a little bit as its corner, to be taking pipe out, putting pipe in, and then improving the crossing under Holly Hill also. Now, the Graves, which own the order, are on the property on the other side of Holly Hill. In rerouting the flow from the intersection, we'd run it along their frontage, and then they already have some water coming across. We would try to channelize that a little bit, maybe try to shift it over to the property line. And then we'd be going across Georgia Power. The Cons, you know, that... We'd have some channel design to do there in their backyard, so we need... We'd need probably construction and permanent easement there. The Charles, who live on the corner of Brock Cliff and Walnut, we would go into their yard and take the 36-inch pipe that goes into that inlet out, and then try to reroute through there. And then the... Not sure if I'm going to pronounce this name right. The Cosmets, we would have to get on their property, because the pipe going under their house, what we'd want to do is cut it off above and below where the house goes, and then just do a pressure route to fill that full of concrete, so that there would be no deterioration of that in the future. And then we would do the same thing at the Mary Annas to try to fill the pipe that goes under there. So those are the properties that would have a direct... A direct impact of the construction, where we would most likely need to get on the property or at least have some access during the construction. So we took those alternatives, and then we did our opinion of cost. Keep in mind, this is before we do any design, and then what happens is, as we go through and have to deal with utilities and things like that, these things could change some. But basically, the alternative number one, which was no retention, and it had all large pipes, our estimated cost is $435,603.48. But keep in mind, that has the concrete channel, line channel included in it, which was about Alternative number two, which is the smaller pipes, but it does have the pond with an outlet control structure, and that in there, basically, is $457,377.52. Now, at this point, in what we normally do on a process like this, is we would consider a difference of $21,774 almost an equivalent price. So the prices here, by the time we get to design, I think there would be enough variation there that those would almost be equivalent prices. So in doing that, basically, our recommendation would be to proceed with a detailed design of facilities in favor of alternative number one, which is the one without retention, so that... And the two biggest reasons is, you would not have a pond to maintain, even though that pond would only hold water during the heavy rains. Yet you still got to cut the grass and keep it cleaned out and all that. So rather than do that and then have the liability of the retention pond, we... Our recommendation would be to go to alternative number one. So I realize that was a lot of information in a hurry. Has anybody got any questions at this point? And if I need to back up a slide, please let me know, and I'll do that, too.
I've actually got three, Paul. This is Hank. Tell me again what your setting for flooding alarms were when you... When y'all started the initial modeling?
Okay. Each structure... Each structure has a, you know, a top, the top of the catch basin.
Right.
And so what we did was, we set that top... If the water came back out of the catch basin as part of the water backing up, then we would consider that a flooding event. So if it was street flooding, or if it was property flooding as a result of the water reaching a level that would come back out of the drainage structure, then we considered that a flooding event.
Okay. And basically, the reason there would be no need for a concrete channel in alternative two is simply because of the retention, correct?
Well, there's... Here's two things. There, you know, it does... It does... Yeah, because the pond then would take the retention, and it would slow the water down some. Okay? So the main thing... One of the main things I'm worried about through there is, there's about six foot of fall from the upper side of there to the lower side. And I looked at velocities through there just with the very, very basic information we have. Velocities in there, you know, you consider scouring velocity at anything above two feet per second. And we were in the neighborhood of three to four feet per second on the velocity going through there. So that's why we put the concrete line channel. If we can slow it down by using the retention pond, releasing a little slower rate, then maybe we can get the velocity down to where that would just be a grass channel instead. Now, the other thing, too, Hank, is that what we could do is, you know, if we decide we could go through and put maybe some check dams in there to slow the velocity down to help create that grass channel, could at least... That also is part of the design.
Okay. And then in the alternative to cost estimate, did that include the cost estimate for the actual land that would be necessary for the retention?
Yeah. Now, what I did is, I went to the tax assessor's office, I mean, their website, and I think that that property in the tax assessor's evaluation was about $25,000.
Okay.
I'll do that right off. But whatever the value in the tax assessor's property card is what I put in for the acquisition of the land.
Okay. That's all I have. Anybody else have any questions for Paul?
I just have one. The smaller pipes are lesser than the... No, the larger pipes are lesser than the smaller pipes.
Yes. The smaller pipes, basically, or the alternative with a smaller pipe is more expensive, because we have to buy and build the pond, and that doesn't even make it consideration. But we have to buy the property and build the pond as part of that alternative.
Okay, gotcha. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions for Paul? All right. Well, if not, Paul, I guess we've got to start counting our pennies now, and...
There you go. So, okay, let me see. I stopped. Okay, there we go. I should be back to you now.
We are.
Thank you.
But that was great information. We appreciate you sharing that with us. And of course, Tim and I will be in contact with you, probably with some more specific questions, and talk about our next move on this process in terms of what we're looking at from a design cost and those kinds of things. Your cost alternatives did not include design costs, right?
Actually, that is... That alternative, those cost alternatives, actually include a 10% contingency, and it includes design and inspection.
Oh, okay.
So it is a project cost, not just construction cost.
Okay. Great. Well, we thank you for our time this night, and we will... Tim and I will be in touch with you to talk some more specifics and look at the potential for possibly bringing this before council down the road to approve as a project for our stormwater utility.
Okay. Good deal. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hey, Hank, I'm going to go ahead and leave the meeting now.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Thanks. Have a good night.
All right.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I've got a couple of other things I want to share with you all as part of the City Manager's Report. We've got about 25 minutes. I don't anticipate that what I have left to share will take that long, so we should have us a little break between the work session and the... Actually, let me back up. Ms. Shinholster, do you want to have any discussion as part of the work session on the Ethics Committee appointments, or you just want to cover that in the regular meeting?
Well, we can ask, do any of the council members have any questions or any... Anyone that they would like to nominate to be considered for the Ethics Committee? I think I sent in to all of you all Dr. Womack's agreement to serve. Is there anyone else that you all have found that may be interested?
No, ma'am, at this time, the slate that's been presented seems to be suitable to me.
Well, Hank, it seems like that's the end of that discussion.
Okay. Well, you know, it is not unusual for me to take up some time, so I wanted to make sure that I wasn't taking up any time from that discussion. So... Since I won't be, then I will move forward. Obviously, based on your agenda and your packets you received, you all will be looking at two resolutions tonight, and I just wanted to cover a little bit of information on those resolutions. I sent all of you some information via email all this time. And I think the biggest one to unpack is Resolution R2008-33, which is the resolution to authorize the Mayor to sign the HUD and Milledgeville Housing Authority Recovery Action Plan. At our meeting in... First meeting in July, John, current interim executive director for the Milledgeville Housing Authority, did a presentation for you all, and part of that presentation dealt with this Recovery Action Plan that HUD was asking the housing authority in the city, and of course, a representative from HUD, to sign to try to get things on track with the housing authority in order for some deficiencies to be corrected. And they basically fell within four areas: one of governance, one of management, one of the physical properties, and then one of sustainability. And I included that actual spreadsheet from the Recovery Action Plan in the email that I sent you all, so I won't go through that again. But the areas that the City of Milledgeville is tasked with in the recovery agreement is, obviously, to... is obviously to agree to work together with the housing authority to develop and implement a sustainability plan. In other words, HUD doesn't want to get these things fixed, and then they go back to the same situation that they've been in before. So looking at a sustainability plan there, and I think the housing authority has already gone a long way in that in terms of looking at the renovations that they're doing and going through the RAV conversions that they are going through. That HUD and the housing authority and, and everybody associated with any work there obviously would need to comply with all applicable federal, state, and local laws. And we would, we would do the permitting process, work to make sure that, that those laws were being followed in terms of, of soil erosion and, and requirements for any type of life safety issues that may be involved. And then I think the biggest one, and, and in my opinion, what this, what this agreement really boils down to is that the city of Milledgeville, through its appointing authority, acknowledges the importance of those appointments to the board of the housing authority. And quite frankly, by signing this Recovery Action Plan, is saying to HUD that the city recognizes that authority and commits to oversee and monitor the board members, even to the point of, of if necessary, getting to the point of removing board members and replacing them with new board members. And I think this may be an opportunity that maybe the city has not had in the past. They've had, they've had the appointing opportunity through the mayor, obviously, but the mayor may not have had the teeth necessary in order to try to, try to cause effective governance to happen through that board. And I think this, this agreement gives the mayor and ultimately the city the opportunity to do that. So nothing in the Recovery Action Plan has the city committing any funding, nothing in the Recovery Action Plan has the city committing any waivers of, of any type, nothing in the Recovery Action Plan has the city taking the authority away from the housing authority with the exception of the appointment of the board. So I, I feel comfortable recommending to you all that the Recovery Action Plan be signed. And quite frankly, if it's not, then HUD's going to come in and take over the housing authority. And that gets to be an issue from a, from a monetary standpoint and a funding standpoint and how all of that is controlled. Mr. Jordan has been in on meetings with me and the mayor and, and housing authority board members and the interim executive director. So Ms. Jordan, I'll, I'll yield to you if you have anything that you want to add to that.
Thanks. I think the analysis that Hank put together for you guys is, is, is extremely accurate. The bottom line is, and you heard it, and some of you have heard it through indirect sources, is the board has had some issues that finally culminated in apparently HUD deciding that it just can't continue because the performance of the housing authority relative to the residents has not been satisfactory to HUD and probably has not been satisfactory to many of you as elected officials in the city. The problem with the whole deal is that, as Hank said, other than controlling, other than the mayor appointing members and the mayor's authority to remove members, and I'll remind you that even Mr. Corcoran stated that the removal is much more difficult, obviously, than, than the appointing process. But I think basically, if you do not want to lose control over, local control over the housing authority, this is an agreement that you're going to have to approve. And what I think, and the discussions that Hank and the mayor and the housing authority, Mr. Pittman and Mr. Rex, those discussions have been that there's simply going to have to be more oversight by the city, however you fashion that, whether or not that's going to be some accounting and reporting requirements, whether it's going to be more involvement by certain folks in city government relative to, you know, keeping an eye on things. That's really, as I see this agreement, that's really what it is designed to force the city to do. Because simply trying, simply, it's one thing to appoint members that will work towards this common goal, this common good. It's much another to have to remove members that are not, I guess, not everybody's rowing in the same direction. And I'm not, I'm not criticizing anybody. I, you know, I've heard enough stories as to what's going on and who's accusing who of what and so forth, but the performance of the housing authority with regards to the residents, which is what it's supposed to be all about, that performance, according to HUD, has been extremely inadequate. And basically, they're saying enough's enough. And if the city wants to be tasked with the responsibility of trying to maintain that local control and getting, you know, everybody on the same page, then you should sign this. If you feel like that, you know, that local control, that oversight's going to be too much, then you just have to let HUD do what HUD's going to do. But that's, as Hank said, there's no, you know, there's no financial obligation, there's nothing in, in that realm. It is an agreement to basically force the city to, the city government, to engage in some oversight of what's going on. And again, I think, I think you have to come up, once you sign, if you approve this and it gets signed, you've got to come up with a plan with, with the housing authority members as to what you as the city government expect from them, from a reporting requirement, auditing. As you know, you know, state law basically says they're to provide you with a report once a year. It doesn't even give much of guidance as to what should be in that report. And quite honestly, that has not been done. And of course, the housing, you know, I mean, the housing authority should be providing it, and what HUD is telling us is to maintain local control, we need to be requesting it and demanding it. So that's what I have garnered from several meetings that we have had with these housing authority members and Mr. Corcoran. And I think, you know, that's, that's the call that you've got to make. It's really a matter of whether it remains local or HUD takes it over. And I don't know what that even means. Nobody's ever been able to explain that one to us as to what that means, but, so who knows?
I will say that the, the draft agreement that you all got in your packet will have to go through some editing in terms of, of dates and, and those kinds of things. And I believe they actually have the mayor's name spelled incorrectly on it, and we'll get that fixed. But those are things, once you approve it in your regular meeting tonight, if you do, then we will certainly get those things fixed in the draft before the final draft is accepted for, for signature purposes. Any questions about the Recovery Action Plan with the housing authority? Okay, just want to very quickly give you some updated information dealing with resolution This is the resolution authorizing the mayor to sign the required resolution necessary for the city to utilize funds from the Coronavirus Relief Fund, or what's better known as the CARES Act. I shared with you, I think it was about three meetings ago now, that through the work of GMA, working with the governor's office, the governor's office had agreed to give the local entities 30% of the funds that had the potential to come to the local entities based on per capita population. I shared with you at that time about what I thought that figure would be in terms of the 100% of the funds, and, and that figure was pretty close. So we, we have gone through the portal, the, the computer portal that the state has provided. We have got initial sign-offs by the mayor so that myself and Ms. Danzy could set up accounts in the portal. And I'm happy to say that less than 48 hours after we got all of that done and, and our account set up in the portal, the state went ahead and deposited the funds into the bank. And so we have that 30% figure that is available for, for CARES Act expenditures. We, we had already been tracking those from the beginning of our issues with COVID because we anticipated that while we didn't know the form of it or the format of it, we were going to have the opportunity maybe to seek some reimbursement on some of these emergency leave based on COVID diagnosis, as well as extended family medical leave and those kinds of things. And so Ms. Danzy has been tracking those, and, and we, we are ready now to load documentation into the portal once you all agree to this, to this required resolution tonight. And I just want to go on record as saying that I'm appreciative for the mayor and for you all acting on this as quickly as you have. I can tell you from our city managers' listserv, not every city manager in this state is as blessed to have people work on this project as quickly as I have been, and I really appreciate it. And I'm anxious to be able to get that documentation loaded because we have to at least encumber this, this total amount that makes up 30% of the potential funds to come to us. We have to encumber it by September 1st so that we can then get our next 35% of funds. And I feel sure that we're going to be able to, to do that, but this, this resolution is required for that. When I ran the resolution by Mr. Jordan for his approval, his point was made that the meat and potatoes of anything like this are in the terms and conditions, and we have those, and we certainly will be following those by the letter to get, to get the documentation uploaded. So I would appreciate you all approving that tonight so that we don't have to send any of this, this money back in this 30% group as well as any that may come down the pipe. So, Mr. Jordan, you have anything to share about that resolution? Sorry, you're muted, we couldn't hear you.
No, I think you have, have described it well. I'm just glad I'm not taxed with the responsibility of hearing all those regulations.
All right. Anybody have any questions about that particular resolution? Okay, one last thing I'll cover very quickly because we may, we may have about five minutes in between the work session and the, the regular session, regular meeting. Two meetings ago, you all had the presentation by the local chapter of NAACP requesting the renaming of McIntosh Street with the blocks that they included being both East and West McIntosh Streets, starting down at Riverbend Apartments and basically going over to Lake Drive at West View Cemetery. We are working through some things that need to be determined to bring information back to you on that, things like the number of parcels involved, the number of residences actually involved in those, that number of parcels because some of those parcels contain multifamily residents. And as well as going through the process with the county and, and the tax assessor's office in those areas to get those addresses redone. We want to look at potential calls for street sign replacements and all of those things that, that would go into renaming of this street. So I did want to let you know that we are working through that process. We didn't take that situation and just sit on it. We are doing that. I can tell you that initially, it appears that there will be 59 individual parcels affected by this, and at least 10 of those 59 parcels have some type of multifamily residences on them, everything from Pecan Hills Apartments to, to some duplexes, to the station of McIntosh. But we're, we're continuing to put that information together for you, to bring it to you, so you'll have the information that you need to discuss that and to make your final decision on that. And obviously, if, if there's information that you need that we don't bring you, then certainly you can ask for it, and we'll, we will go from there to pull that information together for you. But I anticipate being able to email you all most of the information that we think would be necessary for you all to make a decision on that prior to the August 25th, right, the August 25th meeting. And I'll be, I'll be sure and be sending it via email. And with that, Ms. Schinholster, that's all I have.
Okay, does anybody have any other comments?
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair. If I could offer up an alternative, it sounds like this may very well be a very costly endeavor for us to rename McIntosh. And a suggestion that has been offered up from some other citizens in the community, knowing that Mr. Griffin is very involved with the Bollin County Schools Foundation, there's a scholarship named for him, he himself is a graduate of Bollin County Schools. What if we looked at the possibility of renaming ABC Drive? It would certainly impact fewer residences. It would be perfectly appropriate to his charitable endeavors in the community. It may be a much easier, and, and again, more fitting, more honor, more honorable thing for us to do for him. Just a thought to throw that out there.
Well, I mean, that's always a thought, and we can present that to the NAACP and Mr. Griffin to see what his thoughts are, as, as well as, I really don't know if the Board of Education had a purpose for naming that particular area ABC Drive, which is appropriate for the city to be named that. So, you know, I, I'd like to hear, you know, what Mr. Griffin has to say whenever he finds out approximate cause for getting it done, and then we can also come back to them and ask them if they have any other suggestions for our streets. So that's always a thought. We can look into that as well. Are there any other questions? I'd like to make a suggestion before we end this meeting, and that is that those of you who have your telephones and, and are in other places, if you would mute your phone until you are prepared to speak, then we'd have mute your phone, uh, until you are prepared to speak, then we'd have less feedback, uh, on, on the system, if you could do that, because we're getting a lot of feedback from somebody in the background. So if you could mute your phone, mute your phone until you get ready to speak, that may help out a lot. Okay, if there's no, nothing else, this concludes the agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn this, the, uh, work session?
So moved. Second.
Been properly motioned and second, thank you. This meeting is adjourned.